All right, hey, good evening. Thank you all for joining us for our September 17th meeting of the Bunkin County Commission. I think we are ready to begin the meeting, so if we could start the introductory video, that would be great. I'd like to call the September 17th, 2019 meeting of the Bunkin County Commission meeting to order. Let's begin our meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance is that I am the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the time since our previous county commission meeting, our nation has observed the anniversary of the September 11th attacks on our country. Before we undertake the public business that we have on our agenda this evening, let us have a moment of silence to remember the almost 3,000 people who died that day in New York, at the Pentagon, and in Pennsylvania. Those who lost their lives that day included 2,135 civilians, 343 firefighters, 71 law enforcement personnel, 55 military personnel, and 371 non-US citizens who were working at the World Trade Center and the Pentagon when the attacks occurred. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we've got a couple announcements to make. First, I'd like to ask anybody who's got your cellphone with you to please turn it off or silence it. If you parked in the county parking deck to attend this meeting or used the actual transit system to travel to the meeting, you can get validation for your transit pass or parking pass from one of the officers who's with us this evening. Please feel free to see them on your way out. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have financial interests or any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting." All right. We have one addition that we would like to make to the agenda for this meeting, which is to add a discussion of the Waste Pro contract, and we'll add that under Old Business. And under our policies, we only add new items to the agenda, to commission meetings on items that weren't published on the agenda if it's by consensus. So would someone like to make a motion to add this to the agenda?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the second announcement I'd like to make, we had some discussion at our last county commission meeting about our public procedures, and based on that discussion and feedback we've gotten from members of the public, we have, I don't think there's a, we decided not to have a follow-up discussion about this. I think we've decided to basically just keep the procedures as they are. But one of the things that was helpful in that discussion is that, I think, at least for myself, as we went back and reviewed our procedures, we realized there were a few things about our procedures that we weren't really following exactly as written. So I think what we want to do is just keep the procedures as we have them, but to follow them as they've been adopted. So just a couple of things that I'm going to say about that. One thing is that we will take, not public comment before we approve the consent agenda, but we will, at our meetings, ask if there are any questions from commissioners as well as members of the public about any items on the consent agenda. So if you're looking at the consent agenda and there's something you have a question about, there'll be an opportunity to ask that question. And that doesn't mean a, you know, full kind of three minutes of public comment, but any questions that people have, you'll be given a chance to raise those questions. There will always be a public comment on any public hearings that we hold, and there will always be the public comment period, which we're going to keep at the end of the meeting. And then if under Old Business, there are three members of the commission who want to add additional public comment on items, we can do that. Or under New Business, it's two items, or two commissioners. So I do think, since we have specifically added the Waste Pro contract this evening, just because this is a new policy that's rolling out, if any members of the public have any comments about that issue when we get that, we'll invite that at the time. All right, any questions from any commissioners about any of those procedural items? All right, very good. So we come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions from any members of the Board about any items on the consent agenda? Are there any questions from any members of the public about the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. And please come to the, please come to the mic that asked the question.
I'll allow it up, you don't have to have the mic, I've just got a real simple question here. Probably a one question answer. The safety plan for mountain mobility, is that a safety plan for the vehicles or something that they're going to be doing? Just a clarification of what that really is.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
Okay. All right, anyone else? All right, if anyone would be good, provide a short response to that question.
Nate, can I have you too?
No.
Oh, Matt, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there.
So the Mountain Mobility System Safety Plan encompasses all aspects of operations, vehicle, safety procedures, operating procedures, facility procedures. It's basically an all-encompassing safety plan for the operation of the system.
Is that a?
So the plan is adopted, and we do annual updates to the plan for any necessary federal and state regulations, or for consistency purposes, we're constantly monitoring and reviewing our plan.
Thanks, Matt. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published with the addition of discussion of the Waste Pro contract under Old Business? So?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay. The first, we don't have any presentations, but our first public hearing is our FY 2021 Annual Section 5311 Administrative and Capital Grant Applications. And Matt Cable will be back to talk on this other side.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to provide information on our proposed FY 2021 Annual Section 5311 Administrative and Capital Grant Application. The required public hearing and resolution are part of our annual grant application process. We are requesting funding, grant funding through the North Carolina Department of Transportation and Public Transit Division. These are for state and federal grant funds. The grant funds we seek and apply for support a portion of our annual administrative and operating contract costs and capital costs for Bunkin County's community transportation system. In your packet, you'll see information about the specific application documents. There is a memorandum in addition to your request for Board action, which outlines specific details about the amount of state and federal funds requested, as well as the local match required. The local match comes from general fund transfer, which goes into our transportation budget, which supports mountain mobility and our operations of the community transportation system. The request tonight for the Board is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution which would authorize the Chairman to enter into and execute an application for the funds, entering into agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and provide the necessary certifications and grant documents to submit that application and receive those awards. Are we happy to answer any questions now or at the conclusion of the public hearing, should you have them?
Thanks, Matt. Any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve? We need to have a public hearing, sorry. Is there any members of the, let's open the public hearing at 5:13. Any members of the public who wish to comment on this side?
It may be available. I may not know where to find it, but I have asked for in the past and continue what I ask. The number of people that ride each of the routes that Boost has in Bunkin County, I think that's important information because we really truthfully need to be serving the county, and I see it in we go a lot with maybe one or two people, and so I'd like to know the number of each of the routes. And that's not something to have tomorrow. I support the grant, but I would like to have the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity to ask that question.
Anyone else? All right, and Matt, if you don't have Don's email, go ahead and look at it. Because I know we have his numbers, I saw them recently. Ridership on mountain mobility has gone up a lot over the last year or so, so we'd be happy to give his number to you. Is there a motion to approve? Close public hearing, five people to you. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion for the third time.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Chairman, do you have any items to share with us or those minutes?
Yes, sir. I do want to recognize tonight we have in the audience with us our new internal auditor. She started yesterday, Tricia Barnett. Will you stand? Tricia was actually born here in Asheville, but she moved to Oregon, moved to Oregon. For the last four years, she worked there for the UNC. I'm sorry, not UNC, she went to school at UNC. But she worked for the University of Oregon as the chief auditor. She's now back in Asheville. She has her undergraduate degree from UNC Asheville and her master's from Western Carolina. So she's back home, and she'll be an internal auditor, and this is her second day of employment. Thank you.
All right, welcome, welcome. We appreciate your comeback to Bunkin County and your work on the, from the team here in the county. All right, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Seems like Tuesday, a meeting's very special.
Turn your mic on.
Nineteen months ago, I had a little granddaughter on the night of the county commissioner meeting, and had another one today, my fifth granddaughter. So I'd like to welcome in Jesse Jewel Preston. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we've come to Old Business, and we're going to have some discussion about the Waste Pro, the Waste Pro contracts. And we've got some folks from Waste Pro who are with us, as well as some of our staff who are working closely with them, so I'm going to invite them to come up and share a few comments with us, and I think we're going to have some discussion following that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good evening. This is certainly a very, very important topic that impacts all of us. And talking specifically about the solid waste residential collections in unincorporated areas of Bunkin County, that is the specific contract that we're talking about this evening. Thank you for bringing up the PowerPoint. So we want to, as Chairman mentioned, provide an update on where we are in the process with the new contract implementation, and also provide some context on what got us to where we are today. So that's where we'll start, is last year, we began the process of, so in anticipation of Waste Pro's current contract expiring this year, December 31st of 2019, we started the process of developing a request for proposals. And with the understanding of, there were certain areas that we know we wanted to see improved, certain issues that we were encountering with services, items such as environmental code issues with bag trash being placed on the ground, recycling program concerns as far as the contamination in the streams, and just overall efficiencies in the system that we feel like we wanted to focus on incorporating into the request for proposals. So we started looking at that, and we worked to benchmark with other municipalities in similar situations. We interviewed haulers involved in the industry, and we talked to citizens about some of the issues that we're having, areas that we could find improvement there then. So we began to develop that, we brought the RFP to the Board of Commissioners for approval for advertisement. And our goal, as with any bid process, was to get as much participation as possible. That was our target. And, you know, I think it's important to note with the rollout cart system, that was something that was not identified upfront, is this is something that is necessary, we need to go to this. That was, as we looked at the industry and trends and the way that things are evolving, that's just the natural progression of the way this industry is moving towards. So we said, okay, we don't want to just say at the gate, this has to go to carts. We wanted to say, we need to be able to evaluate this and provide an option for proposals to provide us feedback for price points and look at some of the benefits from doing the status quo, which is what we've been doing for over 20 years now. So that was how we structured the RFP. After receiving approval from the Board, we went out to bid through this. And the structure of the RFP was primarily two options, right? So status quo, what we're doing now, which obviously we still have a lot of similar issues we're seeing in the field with, you know, the technicalities of our ornaments, the waste is by ornaments, technically supposed to be in containers. And we see that as a, it's an issue we're seeing all throughout the county, and so we look to see how we can get more systematic with that across the board. And with, so that was option one, the status quo, continuing that out. And option two being moving to a rollout cart-based system where the contractor actually provides the rollout containers to subscribers. And in that way, we're certain that the containers meet the sanitation requirements that we're looking for, and it also provides compatibility with collections equipment to improve efficiencies. So when we went through the, went out to bid, and when the bids came back in, we ultimately received two bids, and ultimately, one of those was deemed non-responsive based on technical specifications. So it is important to note there that we were able to get some information from that firm.
Dane, excuse me. Can you explain what, based on technical, the one that was kicked out, can you?
Yes, in talking through that, so the firm that, there were two firms that submitted bids. One was Waste Pro, and another firm submitted a bid. So when the requirements that we had for cost comparison and be able to compare these two collection options was, we needed to see that information so that we could make an informed decision for subscribers. So the feedback we got from the hauler when we asked them why they chose not to bid, option one, was that it was, they just weren't interested in doing things the way we're doing now. It was going to be too costly for them. One of the things that they identified was workman's comp issues that they have, they've seen throughout the industry with collecting waste in the manner that we're doing now. And, you know, during the pre-bid session, we had approximately seven firms represented at the pre-bid for the RFP, and there was a lot of questions, a lot of concerns expressed from haulers on the vast differences in the carts that are out there in the field now. There's just not a systematic, you know, method right now for collecting across the board because the containers are so different. And in a lot of instances, they are being placed directly on the ground. So that was the feedback we got from that. Other, outside of that, you know, asking some questions, why was there not participation? And ultimately, we got some feedback from other firms that they felt that the costs were going to be so high for them to submit a bid to get into this area and provide the collections that they did not want to submit a bid for this, for the RFP.
Sorry, and just to clarify, did you say that the cost to submit a bid would be higher, or the cost to operate?
The cost to operate, I'm sorry. Yeah, that clarification, the costs to actually go out and collect. So there was some good cost comparisons, so it was technically non-responsive, but they did put an estimate to the rollout cart basis, because they said if it's not going to carts, we don't want anything to do with it. So they did put an estimate there, and I think it is important to note that that cost was approximately, actually was over $4 a month higher than the Waste Pro bid.
That's why I asked the question. You know, the reason they pulled out is they could not compete with the bid, basically, or they did, or they chose not to invest the money to be able to do it.
Right. Yeah, and that, with the firm that actually submitted a bid, they said, you know, as I mentioned, if it wasn't going to carts with option two, then that was not something they wanted to even consider.
But would they hire, even with the carts?
Yes, sir. Over $4 higher per month. Yes. So with, and I feel like Waste Pro did a very good job of third proposal. It was a complicated proposal because we wanted to be able to evaluate continuing what we're doing now, because that was not something we set out at the gate to do. We wanted to evaluate, okay, what are the price points, what are the benefits? So I think Waste Pro did a good job on the proposal of addressing those. Ultimately, option one in Waste Pro's proposal was more of a cost per month than going to the rollout cart-based system. And that was a bit of a surprise to us, because we didn't really know what to expect with a huge capital investment like that from a contractor, not only with the carts investment, but also the trucks, the new trucks to service these accounts. So that was, I'd say surprising, that was informative to see that feedback in a price format. So after that, we went into negotiations with Waste Pro. We had actually established an evaluation committee for the proposals, and we proceeded forward in scoring Waste Pro's proposal. And throughout the evaluation committee, we looked at those, we looked at the options and felt like, based on the feedback, based on the issues that we're taking steps forward on addressing the sanitation concerns, working through, trying to reduce some contamination in the recycling stream, that option two on the rollout cart-based system was the best value option that we could provide for subscribers, and that was identified as the best value. So we, if I can pull the PowerPoint back. So the, I apologize. And talking through the, and obviously, we came to the Board with the recommendation from the evaluation committee to move forward. And per our ordinance, we presented that information in two regular meetings, and that most was ultimately approved to move forward, excuse me, the contract with Waste Pro. So I'm going to ask Mr. Chip Jones to discuss the service offerings at the $19.21 a month.
Thanks, Dane. So our offerings that we proposed for the $19.21 was, number one, understand that $19.21, that is the cost of the service. That includes two containers. Initially, on our RFP, that was for 96-gallon containers. We did receive a lot of feedback, and with negotiations in the county, we expanded that and offered 48- and 64-gallon sizes also. So residents have the opportunity to choose what size container that they get for the $19.21. But the $19.21 includes the service and two containers, one for trash and one for recycling. Okay? So that's the offering, is weekly trash collection and every other week recycling. And I know we've gotten a lot of feedback on the recycling program. Some have said that, you know, we're weakening our recycle program, but we want everyone to know it's just the opposite. This program, by going to the rollout carts, we hope to eliminate the blue bags. So blue bags contaminate the loads when they get there. Blue bags are not a material that can be recycled. And so every time you fill up your recyclables with a blue bag, you're actually contaminating the loads. And so our hope is that you'll be able to place your clean recyclable material in the cart, and that's going to help the recycle process, that's going to help the local process to heal. So we looked at, we think that the cart program is going to actually improve the recycling program for the county. So just a couple of hotspots for us. And also, the deadline initially was tomorrow, September 18th. We have extended that to October 1st. Okay? And that is for the initial rollout. And so, you know, residents have until October 1st to get that information into us. We have the website here that is available 24/7, and residents are signing up with that. Before the meeting, I checked, we had over 10,000 residents have signed up with their carts for the new service. So it's growing, it's working, and we're excited about it. And I will say, just to note, Dane mentioned the capital investment. Our company, prior to this year, had invested nearly $19 million in capital in the Bunkin County marketplace, and with this new contract, we're investing another $7 million into the marketplace. So we want to be here, and we're investing into the community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, too. So some discussion points on why rollout carts, and obviously, we talked about some of the industry standards, and as things are changing and evolving with equipment, making services more efficient and more effective. Some of the key benefits include, as we talked about earlier, the sanitation benefits with providing carts and helping reduce the loaders, the vectors, things like that. Carts help keep our streets and neighborhoods clean, so they provide a sanitary option for folks to move their recycles and waste material from the house to the collection point. And the automated collection... And the automated collection speeds, that speed up service and the handling time. So, you know, it's, it is, we're expanding in automated collections where, you know, that's also expansion and making services a little bit safer for the workers. Because with automated collections, you're essentially moving that, that worker off of the back of the truck and controlling that from the cab of the vehicle. So that's something we're excited about, seeing the expansion in automated collections. Customers, as Chip laid out very well, customers can place their recycling loosely and directly into the recycling cart. Plastic bag contamination is at the top of the list for things that are driving the value of our recycle companies down. So this, we saw that as a key opportunity to take steps to improve the value of our recycling. And carts ask, so we've been getting, getting asked this question quite a bit, and this is areas where we're trying to use our platforms to provide feedback for people that, and let me be clear, this is a subscriber-based system where citizens have the option to participate in this service, or they have an option to take their waste and recycling to one of our permitted convenience sites in Buckland County. We have two of those locations. One location is at the Buckland County Transfer Station. We've provided some of the, the address information here. It's on Hominy Creek, and we're open eight to four thirty Monday through Friday, eight to one on Saturdays. And we've, thousands of people use our service as now. This is a cost-effective way to, to manage your, your waste and recycling, and we do not charge for folks to bring their recycling to us currently. And the other, the other drop-off location is at the Buckland County Landfield, northern part of the county on Panther Branch. So we, we want to provide that context, and that's been part of the conversations with the phone calls. These are, we've received a lot of feedback from them, and we appreciate that. We know how important this is to folks. And, you know, these conversations are not two minutes, hey, this is what's happening. These are fifteen to twenty-minute conversations to talk about what we've talked about this evening. The process, the fact that the contract was expiring, the fact that with a ten-year contract, we anticipated some cost increases, right? Equipment's gone up, fuel, manpower, labor, all those things have, were obviously things we thought were going to be the cost drivers with this contract coming to an end. So those were ways that we targeted to try to manage the cost increases. And, you know, the, as Chip mentioned, the every other week recycling, well, that effectively cut down half of the trips for the Waste Pro vehicles to go out and service these recycling accounts. And it also reduced the amount of vehicles on the ground. So we were, we were very conscious of costs and, and trying to pick out ways from which to add. So as I said, folks, please reach out to our website, reach out to our, our locations at the transfer station landfill. We want to provide as much information as we can and, and for, for options for folks to, to manage their waste and recycling. So again, spurring off the, the conversation with the feedback we've been getting from the general public. Ninety percent of the calls early on, people were asking me, so you're telling me my rate is going to go up on top of what I'm already paying, which is around forty-eight dollars a quarter, an additional nineteen dollars to use these containers? And absolutely not. Nineteen twenty-one is the, is the monthly fee for Waste Pro to provide a waste rollout cart, a recycle rollout cart, and the service for those units. That, that is the fee. So we're, we're working hard, Waste Pro is working, to make sure we're getting clarifications out there. Because that, that did cause some confusion on the pricing point. So I want to be clear with that. Nineteen twenty-one per month is the new rate, effective January first of two thousand twenty. Why can't I use my own cart? Very good question. So across the board, we get feedback from folks saying, look, my cart's totally compatible, it works now. And there, there are situations where that, that is, that is probably true. However, the vast majority of the containers that are being used in the field or the bags on the ground are not compatible with the collection vehicles. So that's, that's the key driver in ensuring we know for sure that the, the carts will be compatible is with the contract-provided containers. We know those will work with those systems. So in order to receive service in this subscriber-based program, subscribers will need to utilize the Waste Pro provided containers, rollout carts.
Can I ask a question on that, Dane?
Yes, sir.
So if there are certain, you know, certain container designs that do, or is there no feasible way to allow folks to use those?
So that...
I understand, you know, about the, why it's having, everything's exactly the same. Of course, that's the traffic. But is there, is there no feasible way to do that?
As of right now...
Not even people who've asked me that. It's not, I mean, they're not gonna, I mean, what they pay's not going to change one way or another. I think some people just feel like, gosh, I've got this container, I hate to just see it, you know, you know, disposed of or whatever. So, but anyway, I've heard that question, Dane.
Absolutely. And, and we've heard that question as well. And, and it does go back to the ensuring the compatibility there. So as of right now, that, that is not, that has not been considered as an option, is for folks to be able to utilize their own containers. It is for service, it is Waste Pro provided containers. So currently, that is, that is not available. I, I would like for Chip to speak to, we're having conversations now because we do identify the issue of people are going to, people have carts, you know? If they're not utilizing Waste Pro's containers, so talking about that price point as well, if folks are utilizing a rental from Waste Pro currently, their rate is actually going to be decreasing. And that touches about twelve thousand of the subscribers. So if those containers obviously will be swapped out when the new containers are delivered in the field. So those will be collected and the new containers placed in the field for service. So Chip, you mind speaking about, we're talking through some problems.
Dane, so one of the, one of the reasons for not having other carts is, you know, we have a big problem in the county with, with contamination. I mean, not with other, with people piling, not a big problem, but people piling their trash on. So, I mean, if you've got three carts out there, Waste Pro, and then one that's out there that's not, then I would assume eventually that you're going to have the other carts just showing up too.
Absolutely.
That would be, I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's a way to police that, even though, and I, I have a cart like that. I have a cart just like theirs, except it's green, you know? And I would like to know what we're going to do with them.
Understood. And we are, we're working through that now.
And recycle.
Chip, let's discuss that. We're, we're talking through logistics on that right now.
I'd say two things. You hit the nail on the head. It is about the, the whole program itself. By having a Waste Pro cart readily identifiable, and, you know, that way we can make sure we track those customers that are paying and those that are not. We do have an issue with that, where there are a lot of long lanes, and everybody brings the trash down to the bottom of the hill. I got two paid customers and ten homes worth of trash at the bottom. And so, you know, this is going to help alleviate some of that. And that's all a part of this system. And in, in regards to your current retainers, we are working on a recyclable program for the containers that can be recycled. We're, we're working hand-to-hand with the county on that. We feel that, you know, we're going to be able to develop a program that will be able to take these containers to a location and decide what can be recycled and what cannot. And that's the best possible thing we can do with those, those containers. So we're working on that. As soon as we have something finalized, we're working with the county to get that message out on how we're going to go about with that process.
Sorry, preliminary timeline on that?
Not really. We're, we're working on it as diligently as we can. I would expect before deliveries go out, we will have an answer for that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it'd be good to know before...
Yes, sir.
Because I'm like...
Before you get another container.
Yeah, but I wouldn't want four in the car.
That's right. Yes, sir. We'll make sure that we, we'll make sure that we get with the county and the residents prior to that, so they'll know what their options are in enough time to make a good
Chip, Chip, I have a question that I called when I was picking up my grandson today at school. Another grandparent asked me this, and she had read the information. She said, starting out, what if she gets a forty-eight gallon, I think it's forty-eight gallon deal, and realizes that's not enough? Now you say that if we go back and get a bigger can, it may be a cost. Now will it be a what?
Yes, there will be a cost for that.
How much?
I will, I'll have to get back with you on that, but there will be a fee for, it depends on if they're going to pick it up or not.
Yeah.
And then there'll be a restocking fee. Because you have to understand, these containers, they're, they're quite costly. And once they're used out in the field, it's difficult to use that container again. You know, no one wants a used trash can. So they all want a new container. So the value of that...
They might in Buckland County, if it's got Waste Pro on it, I don't know, it might be worth it.
But that value goes down drastically. So that's something that we can make sure that we get that feedback out to everyone. But there will be a restocking fee. So, and that's why we invite you to, hey, we have the information on there, let you know what it holds. You're able to go to locations across the county and actually look at the containers and roll them around and, and, you know, visualize, get a, get a, visualize it for yourself as to what you think will work for your household. But we do recommend the ninety-six gallon. That's typical. That's what's used in a lot of communities that we work in, work with now. So we know that that size does work well before.
Well, now, in the city, and that's where I live, we have a ninety-six.
Correct.
I'm on my third trash can.
Yes, sir.
I call them up and they replace them. It's no cost.
Right.
Will that happen, you know, because you do wham out or different things happen?
As long as there's not anything abnormal, you know? If you're not running over the trash can or something like that.
No.
Yes, we'll replace it. It'll be our responsibility to replace those trash cans.
Almost ours, the tires, for some reason.
And we're, we're getting very good quality containers for the marketplace. The containers that we, we use, the brand has a twelve-year warranty with those. So they're very good containers, and we think that they'll work well here.
I'd like to ask that.
Any other question?
Well, we're getting calls, a lot of them. And that's why we're, we're having this discussion tonight. We're having this discussion tonight on account of all the conversations coming forward, and especially the old people. And you have them now basically dropping the service because, you know, the, the truck can't get up the road to get to them. And so, and it's twenty-five dollars. I mean, one lady that, that called Waste Pro, it was going to be fifty-two dollars, but she can't even afford to extra three. So she canceled her service yesterday. I talked to her, I've talked to three or four more. You're going to lose service, including mine, because I can't pull this can up the hill to my house, okay? I have a can now, it's only a thirty-three gallon can. It carries basically two white bags of trash. That's what it carries. I had a lady that basically had the same thing, so she could put it in her SUV. She went to her place and tried to pick up a forty-eight gallon empty can, couldn't pick it up. Older gentleman there, he couldn't pick it up either. So she basically, she went all over. She even went to the transfer station looking to see what they can do. The lady that I was talking to, talking about, said she's going to try to give some other old people and figure out how that they, every two weeks, or whatever they can do, be able to take the stuff to the transfer station. That's a hard lift for these people. And, you know, she said, you know, her, this is hard. This woman only gets seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars a month, social security. She has to figure out what her gas is going to be, you know, to go to things. She's gone through cancer three times. She's seventy-seven years old. And, you know, one bag of trash is basically what she has. And that's, she could get it down to the end of the road with her car, but now she has no way to do that. And even, you know, why would she need a twenty-nine gallon or forty-nine gallon thing? Or sixty-nine, whatever? I don't need it either. So I would take my stuff to the transfer station. Because I'm not going to depend on my wife to try to drag this can up a driveway that gets slick in the wintertime, you know? And if I can't pull it up with my hand out the window of my car, I'm not going to do it. And that's what I've done for thirty years. And my can looks a little bad. The bottom's wore out a little bit. But the wheels don't look too good, it's on it. But it hauls these two bags of trash down there really good, and your people pick it up really fine. So, you know, and we got people saying, why do we have to have this green can with a blue lid? Because it don't match the neighborhood. You know, how come it can't be a black or gray can that don't really deteriorate from the looks of the neighborhood? You know, why are we having to pay more for a barre can than we got two already? But I'm looking at the room, and I've told people, and I was on the radio about this, come to the chamber. All I say in here is a few people, Waste Pro and the rest of them staff. We clean staff out of here and we're empty. And that's, it's their fault, not mine. But, you know, I wanted to bring this forward because there's people that's going to need help. Chip, we've talked, and there's a way that we probably can help. Arvel's here, I'm here, I, you know, I'm not much. You have other people in here that are independent, you know, pickups. So we just have to figure out how to help the older people. I don't care. It's like today with the thing that we had. Out of all the things that we put up, the older people was the number one issue, to try to figure out amount of mobility or help them to get places or do whatever. That's, you know, young people, everybody's for, I am too. But when you go, get old, you're kind of young again. Sometimes it's a little tough to do anything. And I understand that myself. But I'm having to leave your company the first of the year for that reason. Because I'm not going to try to be, there's no way that I can take that can and take it to my house. And I don't want two cans because, you know, I don't really have room for them. You know, I have one in the garage, it sits right next to the door coming out of my kitchen, and we put the bag in it when it's full. So we end up two bags a week. Wednesday morning, I take them down. They pick them up and do a great job. But, you know, am I for this totally? No. Did I vote for it? Yes. Because without that, we'd have trash all over the roads because nobody else was part of it. So it's a good deal in its own way. You know, you're at ten thousand, but you're saying you got, right now, you've got twelve thousand people out there that have your cans already, and you're going to transfer them. So ten thousand now, and you don't have the twelve thousand, but you're going to lose four in my neighborhood, I know of. So if you can afford to keep doing that in neighborhoods, and then if you look at seventy-four-eight where I live, dirt roads coming down, I see piles of blue and I see piles of white. There ain't room to put all these cans you're talking about down there. Because there's no, there's no sidewalk, there's no nothing. How are we going to pick them up with one armed bandit? This hasn't been figured out right yet. And, you know, I'm sorry, but I'm here to try to work for the people. The people haven't showed up, but we do have plenty of talk. And it's like the lady, I didn't expect her to show up here because she can't even hardly afford to get, she, she plans her gas trips, okay, with her car. And I'm not, that's why we're trying to do this, that Waste Pro can figure out how to do something, and the county, we need to figure out how to do something. You know, is it perfect? I don't think what we got's perfect. I think there's room to work with it. You know, so, but it's not up to me. As I said, I didn't want to leave the people with putting their trash on the side of the street and take it. So that's, that's why I voted yes. But Dane can tell you, I said, here it says, you know, no matter what you call the three dollars, it's an increase, and it could be paying for the trash can. So that's the way I looked at it originally. If it's an increase and you're giving somebody something, you're paying for something. And you're not giving the trash cans away, I can tell you that. You know, I think the people that have, there's a guy behind me, he just bought a brand-new, big one. He said, what am I going to do with it? I said, I don't know. He said, but it does everything Thursday. I said, I can't tell you what to do with plant flowers in it, I don't know. But it's brand-new. So when you're buying these, I don't care if I got a ten-year warranty or a twelve-year, you're getting a better price because you're buying thousands of them. So your price is going to be a whole lot less than what he just paid for his at the store. If... If it works, he should be able to use it, you know, and Waste Pro should be able to put something on it to utilize it, Waste Pro picks it up. But making a gentleman who just bought something, take something different that don't really match his house either, you know. You go all over the place, I just looking on my iPhone, and you see all these colored things that don't even match a house. And most people paying at their house to try to match. Well, if you put gray or black or something around it, it don't distract from it as bad. But, you know, some people, one way some people, but I thank you for what you're trying to do. And I think there's areas that we can work to try to help the people. And if there's not, I mean, there's not, but I went on the radio, told people, come up here. They're not here. I don't have anyone out here that's gonna discuss this, but, you know, Waste Pro's trying. You know, we got in trouble a long time ago, we pulled out of that, so we don't need that again either. And, you know, and I see one other person in here that, that has his own little company too, and he's supportive of what's happening, and I understand that. But I just wanna thank you for what you're trying to do, but as we've spoke many times so far, we have to figure out a different plan to help the people that can't afford this. And I, you know, and me as a county person, you know, we can take their tax money, we can take their tax money with them making payments, but we can't help them in any other way. So we as a county need to figure out how to help the older people. And if Waste Pro can figure out a way that can help them, I'd appreciate that a lot. That way, you know, it would be a benefit. Thank you.
Yes, sir, well, thank you for your comments. And, you know, on a lot of our brochures and believe on the side of our trucks, you see that one of our slogans is caring for our communities. And that's what we're all about. And we are working with the county staff to come up with a solution for some of the residents that you just talked about. So we're hopeful that we'll have some ideas coming forward soon that may be a benefit to some of those citizens that are finding some of the cost and the service hard for them to bear. Okay, so we are willing to work with the county and we'll continue to work with the county until we get it right. Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Jingles, one of the questions that has come in frequently to my inbox this afternoon, since we chatted earlier today, is just to clarify where the cans are to be placed.
Great question. For every customer, that's gonna be different where the cans are gonna be placed. And when we start the rollout program, that's gonna be really vital, crucial to educating the customers on the placement of the cans. Our goal is going to be to, when we deliver the cans, to deliver them at the location that they need to be placed, along with a welcome packet that will have specific instructions and more about the new program. So that information will be coming forward and they'll have a firsthand view of where that can goes when it's delivered.
Thank you.
Any other questions for commissioners? Are there members of the public who'd like to, you know, this is a, this is a new contract, it's an ongoing contract, so we just thought it would be helpful to just, you know, have some community discussion about this as, as we're moving into this new contract. So, Mr. Treadle?
Can't hear you back here, Brownie.
Okay, thanks, Treadle.
You want me to keep your notes? I'm not gonna say anything that I haven't told them personally, first and foremost. I can't wait till they bring two cars at my house and see how they're gonna place them in my driveway, when my driveway is jammed right up next to my neighbor's driveway. And that driveway has about eight or nine of those houses you're talking about, and they got space about as long as those chairs right there for their sixteen carts. It's gonna be fun seeing those placed, and I have questions about that. Number two, the little old lady. I have discussed this, the county staff, Waste Pro knows about a bag tag system. They can have a flat rate for that truck driving by that lady's house, twelve dollars a month or fifteen dollars a month, and pick up a bag, and she has to buy these tags that they can only buy from Waste Pro, and she puts one of those tags in her one little bag of trash. And in the country, that lift arm truck is not gonna pick up all the garbage, folks. They're gonna have to roll the cans from my driveway out into the road. I don't have a curb. There are housing developments where that system will work, but there are places in the country it won't work. So they're gonna have to have somebody out there to pick it up. Solutions can be found, they are to be found. Another thing is if they've got an area where it's in the country, like you're talking about, Mike, find somebody and subcontract that to somebody to pick up that little old lady's garbage and not worry about it. Because they're gonna lose the business anyway. So enforcing people, you're gonna lose customers. I suggest that you give people a choice for a while. And when they find out what's going on, they'll go earlier. That's just my personal opinion, I have nothing against Waste Pro, you're right, they're the only ones that bid. And so we gotta work with them any way we can. But I keep thinking, if I show them how to make money every month off that little old lady, and only have to give a dollar for a tag every time she picks her trash up, you ought to be able to reduce her trash bill a little bit. Because he's gonna get a lot more money with those four customers, that's, say, it's twelve dollars a month, that's forty-eight dollars just for driving by. Just wanted to share that with you, let you know there are solutions. And by the way, if you pull everything out of your recycling terms of glass, paper is fifty percent of what's reserved for any of your land foot. You wanna double the life of your land foot, concentrate on pulling the paper out and keeping it clean.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Uh, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board. Trash is a money-making business. I think solution to the problem is the key, we talked about the negative there, and the solutions are what we need to do. I think Waste Pro should set up a committee, not the commissioners. They should have a committee set up somewhere or another that takes all the complaints into that one, and people can go there and find solutions to their problems and figure out what to do. The thing is, a commissioner is forced to have a direct contact on the list on your website where these complaints are put out there where you know what's going on, not your county manager. But it should be public on what these complaints are, because other people might be having. You know, the thing that I've heard on healthcare, mental health, and also opioid, and you've evolved, heard it too many, many times, and it goes right back to what we've heard tonight, when he said there's a slogan on the side of the truck that said, caring for our community. How many of these slogans have you heard on opioid, mental health, and health in general? How many of these slogans have you heard? That is a slogan, that is to take your mindset off of the real problem that you see out here. What happens is the people that we're talking about, Mr. Frye's talking about, and y'all are concerned about, or should be, is our retirement community here in Asheville, in Bunkham County. We live in the biggest community of retired people other than Hendersonville. Why should we be concerned? Because we're all getting older, and this is a big problem. What I would encourage is, is to look at a committee of some kind that these things can go through and identify these problems quick and solutions to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, um, I'm sorry, yes, sir, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Tony White, Smokey Mountain West, New York.
I'm sorry, please speak on the mic.
I was in discussions with these folks back when the bid started, you know. And my concern was safety, I've been on the trucks running, you know, over the years, it didn't, I'm glad that you're saying so, you've evolved, because that was something I wanted to see it do. It's being picked up the same as the hotter days, thirty-five years ago, you know. I've been in this since eighty-eight. There's a lot of dangers, you know, you pick trash up, especially piled there on the road, the drivers poking the needles, the glass. You'll see them putting the recycling in a paper bag, and everybody puts it out the night before when it rains, it falls apart, and they're chasing it, you know. A couple weeks ago, somebody just running through somebody's pile of trash and scattered it all up the road. You know, they're not here to pick up messes, they gotta get the trash in a safe manner. And the automated trucks, I really like those. You know, it's hard to ride back to that truck, it freezes, raining, everything, and you probably won't be able to get it a hundred percent. But you get a bunch of it. And these containers, it needs to be in a container for safety and a lot of reasons, and, you know. But these, these guys with these, they're doing it. When they pick up now, I might get a block, I'm a little nervous.
I'm sorry, it's great.
But they, they need to pick it up with containers, they need to head in the direction of automated trucks. When one comes along, they can do more with it. And these containers have to work with those trucks. I'm not sure if you have that in mind, when they put these containers out, and that they work with that truck. That's, that's the way I see it, and I'm glad to see it evolve, and I hope we need to get it in mind and those concerns.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else?
Something that, you know, Tony just brought up there. I honestly would like for Tony, or Dane, or Chip to come out and look at the gentleman's container behind, that lives behind me. Because he just got it, you know, it's a heavy container. I have to say, it's a very heavy container. And it's a ninety-six gallon, that's what it is, that's what he bought, you know. So we're saying things that we're not sure of being totally truthful. You know, bring one of your containers, let's weigh them. Or I'll figure out how to put it in my truck and take it to your place, and we'll weigh them both of them and see exactly where they're at. So if they weigh the same, they're pretty well being made by the same manufacturer. And so then they should be able to utilize what they spent all this extra money on. See, it's like people say, they've got barre container, two hundred dollars. If you get a barre container from Yale, it's three hundred, that's what I got emailed today on. So if they've had barre containers for two years, why are they gonna have to buy, you know, get one from Yale for three hundred dollars just because it's Yale? And, you know, containers is fine, and I'm not against it. I just can't pull them up my hill, so that's why I'm gonna have to opt out. If I lived in the flat, we could figure out how to get it out there. But pulling it up my driveway and stuff is not gonna work, so. Let's weigh them, you know, weird things, but let's, let's go find the facts out. You know, that's what I want to say, so. I'll get with him, whatever we need to do to get his container, we'll take them and weigh them with your ninety-six pound container. If they weigh the same, they're just as good issuers. So let's see, okay? Thank you.
So one question. In terms of the, you know, the concern that for some folks, the, you know, larger containers are harder to maneuver around and the desire for something smaller, in terms of, you've got three options you're offering folks now, in terms of offering another smaller option, why not offer another smaller option? Is it just, at some point, is it just not, does not function with the...
We considered that, but with the trucks, you know, the size varies so much. And, you know, what happens is that truck reaches out and grabs that container, lifts it upside down. And so, you know, if the tension isn't right on that container, the container slides in the back of the truck.
Right.
And, you know, it's hard when you have such a large variation of container sizes. So I think the next size is like maybe thirty-six or thirty-eight gallon, it's in the thirties. But, you know, you're going from one container that's thirty-some gallon to one that's ninety-six gallon and having the same truck pick it up, we can see that there could be a lot of issues.
The range might be too big.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, you, you have three now.
That is correct.
Ninety, ninety-something, sixty-something, and...
Forty-eight.
And forty-eight.
Yes, sir.
Forty-eight holds three bags, which is probably what I'm gonna use. You know, when you were talking about the bags, I mean, I, I have before had broken glass at the house and put it in a bag and wrapping it up in something, because I know those guys are grabbing those bags, and it just scares me to death, you know, some of those things like that that are hazardous. And I didn't think about it until you, you mentioned it there.
We had Neil Burke here this week, Neil Burke. So a lot of dangers, you know, when you have a lot of trash.
Commissioners, any other questions? Well, gentlemen, thank you all for being here, you know, we've signed a new ten-year agreement, so we're gonna be working together on this. I'm sorry, five-year...
I'll take it.
We can, we can... So we're gonna be working on this for a long time together, so we appreciate the opportunity to dialogue about it and think about different ways to, you know, continue to meet the customers' needs in the best ways that we can. So we appreciate the chance to keep talking about this, especially as we're rolling out the new program. And thank you for considering the concerns you're hearing from people in the county and the questions that commissioners are reeling as well.
You know, something, Chairman, I just thought it might be good after, you know, maybe three months after the contract, y'all, you know, might keep up with some of the exceptions we've talked about and, you know, and how you're working through them and, you know, come back and just, you know, tell us how good you're doing on those things and what you're doing to address them. I think just coming back early might be a good opportunity just to let us know how things are going.
I anticipate having to be back before then, because we wanna make sure we, we, you know, continue to educate everyone on the program. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we come to new business, the first item is consideration of a resolution approving surplus personnel property policy. And Ron Ventura is gonna be, is in the saddle.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we're here to discuss the surplus personal property disposal policy. The commission about six weeks ago suggested that we should streamline the disposal of some of our surplus properties. So we tinkered with the, with the policy a little bit, just to clarify some language that if it's worth more than thirty thousand dollars for one item or group of items, we have to use the general statutes provided in Article twelve, Chapter eleven, sixty-eight. So the change here that's really relevant is that for any single item or group of items that are valued at thirty thousand dollars or less, this policy designate, delegate...
We can't hear back here in the back, I'm sorry to interrupt.
This change of the policy would delegate to the county manager or designate the authority to surplus these properties, to put them out on, online for sale, and that would establish the market value to sign any paperwork required. And if, and if there's any property that's junk, so to speak, then it just authorized as a report to the finance office and then disposal of the property. And that would just be in the nature of common sense. So the first option would be for any group of items or single item would be to offer it if they're in good condition and can be further used for county purposes, to offer it to other departments. So if there's no takers, then it would go through the surplus process. But the only substantive difference is that this gives the authority to the county manager or designate, and it doesn't have to come to the board each time that some item or group of items is surplus to less than thirty thousand dollars. If there's any practical ways, I'd be more able to answer that.
Are there any questions, commissioners?
The warning of the resolution doesn't say that we offer it back to departments.
That's not necessarily the resolution itself, the resolution refers to the rewrite, and it appears not.
Blocked reading.
But we, it's a rewrite of the policy, and in that policy, at the beginning, it says the first option is to offer it to other departments. And that specific language may not be in the resolution, but it isn't a policy we put.
Got it.
All right, is there a motion?
Yes. Oh, my God.
To approve? To approve?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Same.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right, thank you. Okay, next up, um, we're gonna have a discussion of the county fee schedules and Jennifer Barnett will present the subject.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So on the agenda this evening is a request to approve the fiscal year twenty fee schedule. Historically, as departments have had proposed changes or fee schedules were due for renewal, these requests were part of the consent agenda. The Budget Office has worked with departments to compile all county fees into a combined document. We are bringing this forward as a new business item so that we can provide additional public awareness and insight to the public as well as you around changes and fees. Outlined in the supporting information that's included with the agenda is a summary of the proposed changes. Departments with changes, um, as it relates to their departmental fees includes health and human services, public health, permits and inspections, solid waste, for planning, uh, the only change for planning is related to copy costs. As we reviewed the fee schedules across the county, we identified that there were variances in the charges for, um, like black and white copy costs and color copy costs. Um, so the changes for planning equalizes copy cost, copy costs across the county. Um, and then you will see in reference to public records requests based on, um, recent history for increased volume and the depth of public records requests documented in the communications department section, um, our proposed fees for the public records requests. And that language is, um, in keeping with statute, what is allowable to be charged by statute. There are representatives for each of the departments who are requesting proposed changes and can certainly answer any questions that you may have or would defer to you as to what level of detail you would like to hear information about the changes.
Quick question for IT technics. I think I am tracking the changes around the three forty B policy, but just wanted to see if you could clarify that there's a number of items where it looks like, uh, primarily birth control methods where they were being charged at a three forty B rate and then are now charging a higher rate for, because some private insurance companies will pay. So anyway, if you could just clarify that, that seems to be the area where there's the biggest jump, just make sure I'm tracking on that.
Right, so we are obligated under three forty B pricing to use that pricing for our clients. We are also allowed to charge third party payers, um, additional, so three forty B is, is pricing, pricing that's given to us and, and other entities like us, um, and not, so all of the medical fields do not have the ability to use three forty B pricing. So, um, we are encouraged by our state to, to, um, charge third party payers the higher fee for that. But it does not impact our clients and our sliding fee scale advice.
So previously, everyone's being charged at the three forty B rate and now, correct? Okay, great, thanks for that.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioners?
Uh, yes, I have one. On the permit inspection, most of these are, they haven't been an increase since two thousand sixteen, correct?
That's correct.
So three years.
I have one more question on the, um, public, um, records requests fee schedule that's being proposed. Just if we could get a little context around, um, the, uh, what the previous charges have been and what the changes are and what's dragging it.
Are you, are you steering toward excessive research or IT technology or?
Um, well, that, but just sort of a general overview of just, um, what?
Just there wasn't a charge before.
Yeah, so that's that context of, of why we're shifting into charging and then what, like, the circumstances under which there might be charges that included staff time versus just pure expenses of printing. Just so there's information out there about that, I think it's a little, um, I'm not sure how many other communities charge. I've been trying to do a little research. Is it, is it common practice? It is?
Well, it is, and I, I think the vast majority of the time, uh, our public information folks will send out a records request response electronically. Um, sometimes it comes on a USB drive or some other requested device and just over time, uh, it hadn't always been the practice to charge what the cost of that flash drive is, like three dollars ninety five cents is what we're proposing here. Um, we do know from working with our, on our printer usages and how those multifunction displays work recently, it's just over ten cents per copy is the actual cost to the county to run the machines. So we just wanna make sure those are out there and it also provides that if there's a reasonable way, there is just a couple of copies here, taken. Some people abuse the process. We wanna make sure that people understand that if they're making a request, that there may be a charge. Um, that would lead to excessive uses of information technology or clerical time. If, if, if it's a situation where, uh, in the statute does provide that if it is such a situation where it's an excessive request in terms of clerical time or staff time or IT time, and this is really focused on situations, we're not talking about what's generally kept as public record, normal records that the county deems advisable to keep for everyday business. So if there's a request for things that we really just don't keep track of in terms of an everyday list and IT is to run the program, then we wanna be able to, but make sure we'll know that we'll get with IT, sort of estimate how much time it will take and then give those people an estimate of what the cost will be to produce that material.
Sure.
So I've got, uh, I don't know what's going on, but what I see is.
Need to get your mics turned on up there.
Yeah, I do.
All of you.
Everybody, for the love of heaven, turn your mics up. Um, so I do have some concerns, okay? The, uh, manufacturing home, uh, the cost on some of our, you know, lower income folks is going up. One's going from two hundred to two seventy five, that's over a thirty percent increase. A lot of the fees that I see around the permitting to me are excessive unless somebody can explain to me differently. Uh, some of them appear to be, uh, just going up by fifty dollars or, but a single wide going from two hundred to two seventy five. The reason that we're listing is to help offset cost. I don't know what cost would increase associated with that because, I mean, the same amount of people are going to be doing the work. Couldn't, I don't think we're gonna be adding additional, maybe we are adding additional people, I don't know. Uh, manufacturing home approved multi-sections going up the same amount, seventy five dollars.
What we've always done in the past is there's been an additional seventy five dollar fee for HVAC units. That fee has been eliminated since, like, ninety percent of most of the mobile homes now already have that fee added to there. So they're actually paying two seventy five now for a single wide unit with HVAC.
Okay, so, uh.
So we're just taking that fee off of, of adding an additional and going ahead and adding it into the permanent fee schedule.
Okay, so I think it would be important under impact for that information to be provided because the impact is not, is, I mean, there's no additional impact for someone that is.
Correct, there is.
For someone that is going, that is buying a, a single wide or you're a multi-section, because you're not charging seventy five dollars for the HVAC fee.
Yes, because.
They're actually paying the same, which I will agree with you one hundred percent that, um, new manufactured homes will include a heat pump. And they're putting a heat, a heat pump on, on, on everything. That's been going on for a long time. So, um, so there is no, no increase. Tell me about the four hundred dollars. There's not, no existing fee schedule?
That's for the new mobile homes that are allowed in the, uh, new Zonex districts R one, R two and Beaver Dam. Cause we have to do two additional inspections on those.
And they're charging a four hundred dollar fee?
That's to cover the two additional trips.
And that is, why do you have to do two trips?
Uh, we have to do another footing inspection and then we have to also do another, basically a final inspection on the underpinning, make sure that it's done correctly.
So how, sorry. But just, it's just, is it, um?
I will be tight.
But the one above it, uh, is three fifty, right? This is.
Correct.
Am I reading this right? This deal, the one above is three fifty, this one's four hundred.
Right, we're not trying to, yeah, we're trying to still save money, you know, for that, for the price of those homes. We're not trying to gouge them, we're just trying to cover some of our costs.
Well, and I, I'm not, I want you to understand my comments, my comments, or I'm not saying we're gouging anybody. I'll be very, very clear on that, uh, but, uh, but I wanna understand that, so maybe answer this. If someone is, is getting a, a new manufactured home and, um, it's a multi-section, what's the increase in the fees?
Single wide to the new one, you're looking at, uh, fifty dollars or seventy five dollars, I'm sorry. We, we average, on a single wide, we average four inspections. On a multi-sectional, we average six inspections. Cause that's six trips that we go out, so.
But that's our choi, that's, that's the county's choice on some things, but what about, what about the, uh, marriage wall inspection?
Well, those are all state mandated inspections that we have to perform.
But do you have to wait a day for the, um, do they have to inspect the sidewall before the siding goes up?
For the marriage wall connection?
Yes.
Yes.
So you've got, on a double wide, how much is the additional?
Seventy five.
So what's the four hundred?
That's for the new zone, the R one, R two and Beaver Dam districts.
Okay, so then that's four hundred?
Yes, because we have to make two more additional trips. We have to go out and do another footing inspection for the perimeter foundation and everything that's required.
The design standards that we require.
That's right. I just wanna be, I just want people to understand and be very clear that so, so to be able to, but they're having additional work now. So that work has to be inspected, okay? So therefore that's not an increase.
Not an increase.
You're charging that much on everybody else, right? To do a, to do a footer, how much do you charge for a footer inspection?
For just one trip footing inspection?
Yes.
It'd be eighty dollars. Under the new proposed, right now it'd be seventy five.
Okay, so you're, you know, R one and R two, and I, I know some people up there think I'm screaming and that and I'm not. Just wanna be very clear that if, uh, at the four hundred dollars is for two additional inspections.
Correct.
So it's two hundred, not eighty dollars. So a footer, because you're only doing a footer inspection for the, for the foundation, the only additional inspection you're doing is for the foundation.
No, we have to do a final after the, after it's all complete.
But you're doing a final on everything else?
That's why we're charging more in these areas, because we have to come back and do another final on that perimeter foundation.
Right, so you don't have to do the final, right, on the underpinning one of the others?
Correct.
Because it's not in R one, R two?
Correct.
Okay, so you're doing a footer inspection and then you're coming back and doing a, uh, perimeter wall inspection?
Uh, foundation, yeah, curb wall.
Right, to make sure that all that's done properly, correct? That's two inspections, and they're two hundred dollars a piece.
That's two more on top of the four that we've already done.
You have twenty five dollars.
But the total is four, yeah, it's, the total is four hundred dollars.
Correct.
And all of that, and a double wide anywhere else, how much would the fee be?
Three fifty.
Okay, then, thank you, I got it.
Is there a motion to approve?
There is, but don't cut me off, this is cool stuff.
Is there a second? Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right, thank you. And next up, we've got several budget amendments to review and Jennifer Barnett will walk us through these. There's, I believe, four in total. And, um, I believe that when we've done these in the past, we just do an individual motion for each one. So how about if you just, um, present each one, then we'll pause, discuss and vote and then go to the next one? Sound good?
Sounds good.
Great.
So the first budget amendment is for the general fund. And the, um, total dollar amount is one million and nine dollar, one million nine thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. So the departments that are outlined, um, in the requested amendment have requested that fiscal year twenty nineteen budgeted amounts be carried forward into the fiscal year twenty twenty, um, year for the following reasons. And these vary, um, across the different departments as to why and, um, included in the budget amendment is supporting documentation for each department as to the request and the amount. The various reasons for why the request is made is that in some instances, programmatic dollars are required to be accounted for and used for specific purposes. So the remaining balance for fiscal year nineteen of those specific restricted funds would be carried forward for use in fiscal year twenty for that specific programmatic purpose. In other instances, um, the department has engaged either for a product or a service. So they've, um, ordered a particular item, obligated the funds earlier in fiscal year twenty nineteen and the product was not able to be delivered or the service was not able to be completed during fiscal year twenty nineteen. Therefore, their request is to carry those funds forward so that they can receive that product or complete the service in fiscal year twenty. Additional, um, dollars related to the economic development incentives. Um, these are where incentive grant dispersment has not been requested, um, from the particular contractor in fiscal year twenty nineteen. We still maintain the obligation, once they request that dispersment, to pay them. So we will request that those funds be made available in fiscal year twenty, once they demonstrate that they've met the incentive benchmarks and make the, the formal request. And then for soil and water, um, that request is related to unexpended board funds. They generate, um, revenue from selling materials that that is then used for board expenditures and that is particularly to their request. So the source of funding for this is appropriated fund balance. What you will see when we review fiscal year twenty nineteen end is that these were dollars that went unexpended in fiscal year twenty nineteen. Therefore, we are requesting that out of that savings, so appropriated fund balance, um, that these dollars then be budgeted for spending in fiscal year twenty.
All right, is there a motion to approve the general fund budget carry forward in the amount of one million nine thousand two hundred and thirty dollars?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post?
The second item, um, on your list is related to the public school average daily membership sales tax and lottery project fund. Um, this board approved the submission of the Fairview Elementary School application to the public school capital fund on June eighteenth, twenty nineteen. The project has been approved by the state of North Carolina, um, for the education lottery funding in the amount of two million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And these are for renovations and additions to Fairview Elementary, um, which will be utilized to accommodate the K through three class size reductions. And the project estimated begin date is January first, twenty twenty. And the project estimated begin date is January first, 2020. So this establishes the project budget in the school ADM sales tax and lottery fund.
Some over approval, two point one five million, Fairview Elementary School, second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The third request for budget amendment is related to the sheriff forfeitures fund in the total amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. Throughout the fiscal year, the sheriff forfeiture, um, receives revenue as a result of, um, drug seizures. Um, this allows us to equalize the, the cash that they've received, to bring up, to recognize the revenue, establish these, um, expenditure dollars, so that they can then spend it for the purposes that are eligible through the forfeitures fund.
Is there a question?
Yep.
What are the things that the forfeiture fund can support?
I'm going to look to, um, Sherri Powers, um, to provide that specific information.
Hi, Mr. Commissioner. I didn't know I was going to have to speak tonight, so I didn't bring the, um, booklet with, with me, but basically, the federal forfeiture dollars come to the sheriff's office through the federal equitable sharing program. There are strict guidelines, and they have certain qualified things that you can spend money on, um, and, and, and another whole list of things that you cannot spend the dollars on. Basically, equipment, uh, uniforms, training, buildings, things like that that are approved through the fund, and we carefully vet those items through the, the county's purchasing process. Anytime there's a request to spend forfeiture dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the sheriff forfeitures fund, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So the last budget amendment request is related to the solid waste fund, similar to the request for the general fund for the budget carry forward. Solid waste had contracts, um, that were in progress during the fiscal year 2019 year. Um, due to, um, the need to wait for some results, um, compliance and water monitoring results, those services have been delayed. They can't, they were not able to fulfill those services in full in 2019. So the request is that, um, two hundred and four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars, um, essentially be carried forward, so out of their fund balance, um, so that they can continue those services and accomplish them in fiscal year twenty.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Someone?
Say it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, um, we've got a couple of board appointments to address. First is juvenile crime prevention council, there's one vacancy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, uh, one on economic development.
I recommend William R. Hathaway.
Second.
And so this is for one of the commission appointed positions on the EDC, is that correct?
Yeah.
And how will we advertise this?
I'm not sure, I have to get back with you on that. I'm not sure of the advertisement.
And, um, can we only have one applicant?
Yes. Tim, do you want to comment on this one?
For this particular, uh, appointment, there wasn't an advertisement, uh, there was a need for a replacement on the board, or the EDC, uh, to replace the former, uh, mission representative who since left mission. So the thought was for the EDC to make a recommendation, to appoint someone to still fulfill that kind of healthcare expertise on the EDC board. I think so, that's the recommendation.
Um, do we have designated spots like that? I understand it's an opposite employer in the community, but do we have designated spots like that? Or just a sort of pass, whatever, um, presence of different groups like that?
There's not a spot dedicated to a healthcare representative, but, uh, mission being one of the largest employers in the county, the goal is to try to meet that need.
Okay, I see.
Well, I, um, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable not advertising this, if we don't have a policy for, uh, such a designated spot. So, um, I think if we want to create a policy, I mean, I'm open to hearing, uh, you know, I'm open, I'm open to the idea, but if this is just a general county board, I, I believe that it should be advertised, and we should, we should see who's interested, and we should consider all applicants before we make a decision. Again, some of our boards, we do have designated spots for different groups and perspectives, but if we do not have a policy for, for that on this case, I, I believe we should open it up.
So is this designated?
It is not designated. It is, it is a vacancy created by a former mission employer, uh, employee who's rotating off. So it would be replacing a mission employee with someone from HCA, but we don't have any policy saying mission, you know, mission gets an automatic spot.
How many slots do we have on the EDC board?
For county reps, or just even...
Oh, for county reps.
So there, there's just the, the two, um, that are appointed by the, the, the board, and this is what it is. And I'm, I'm glad to take a look at the bylaws and bring something back to this board, just to make sure that we're, we're compliant.
I will remove my, um, my recommendation for clarity, and, and, uh, bring this to the next board meeting, uh, if that's okay with the board.
That's no problem, I'll, we'll be back.
And obviously, nothing against this applicant, or something, they may be great, I just think we need to think about the process.
Now, let me make sure I understand, because now, I'm on the board representing the commission, right?
That's correct.
And then we have one other.
That's correct, and we, we have appointees, and then we have ex officios, and, uh, one ex officio in this case is the county manager.
Right.
There are specific appointees, and I'm glad to, I'll bring it back before the board with those details, just so we're all on the same page.
Right.
And we should have that, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Each board is, uh, what, I mean, you could probably do that more than the, what each, what that board is made up of.
We do have makeups on the board that we can present.
Okay. And I, and I would just say as a starting point, if, unless something is reserved for a particular group to make the appointment, I think we should, we should always advertise for it. And then we might, if we don't have a policy on it, we might want to, uh, make sure we have a specific period of time that we advertise it for, to make sure everyone has a chance to, uh, you know, to really see the boards and commissions that are out there, and anyone who's interested could, uh, could apply.
So I want to comment on that, because I, I think it, that's, that's a good point, because this commission does not need to extend the advertising time, just because, um, some, or, some of us may not like who's there, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it shouldn't be, we should not extend the advertising time, just because it may not be, may not be the one on one. Does that make sense? And so we add another couple weeks to it, so I think it's a good idea to have a policy that says we...
Do, do we have a policy on that, or is it just sort of, you know, as things...
We don't have a policy on that.
You might want to think about that, actually. Just somewhere, just so we, you know, so you have a sense for, you know, how long should, should something be out there before we bring it, before we, if the board asks on it? So maybe, maybe something else for us to just, uh, think about, not make a decision on, on the spot, that we probably should be, just be consistent in this, right?
And usually, that is up to the particular board lots of times with the...
I think it should be consistent across all public boards and commissions, that we, we basically say, if there, if there's a vacancy, there should be a certain amount of time that we, we advertise it, invite applications, and then make a decision.
And most of the time, it is extended because we haven't gotten any.
Yeah, that's right.
So that's why, that's why I said that we don't have a strict policy, but we can if the board chooses to.
Okay, let's just, uh, let's, let's think about that, but let's just take a little bit more time on this one. Um, I think in the interim, you know, if we do have a vacancy on it, currently, there's a lot of specific slots, so anybody who's interested, feel free to, you know, put your hat in the ring, and we'll take this back up, once we have a chance to just give it a little more time to, uh, see if, if anyone else is interested, and then we'll, we'll make a decision.
Wrong, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. All right, um, a couple of announcements. Uh, let's, let's do public comment first, and then we'll do, uh, we'll do, uh, announcements. Are there, uh, any members of the public who wish to comment to the board? Uh, your time limit is three minutes. Yes, sir. And, uh, just let us know your name, and we're in.
Hello, Daniel Walton, uh, living in East Buncombe County. Uh, Chairman Newman and Commissioners, on behalf of the Mountain Express, uh, I would like to register our concern about the new fee schedule for open records requests proposed by Buncombe County's Communications and Public Relations Department. We'd like to draw your attention particularly to the special service charge proposed for the, quote, "excessive use of information technology resources, clerical time, or supervisory assistance." While NCGS one thirty-two dash six point two gives local governments the authority to charge such fees for providing public records, the statute provides no definition for excessive. Express has been informed by county staff that the assessment of a special fee, quote, "would be determined on a case-by-case basis," unquote, with no specific criteria listed for that determination. Public interest in the county's documents has increased in the wake of revelations regarding corruption among former Buncombe officials. Express believes that such interest is a sign of a healthy democracy, and we are worried that the potential for county staff to arbitrarily assess a special charge without specific criteria could have a chilling effect on the public's ability to access information about a local government entity that has repeatedly violated the public's trust in the past. We urge that this specific language be tabled until county staff develop quantifiable guidelines for assessing a special service charge. Open records requests promote the county's goal of transparency, and concrete guidelines will help both citizens and the media shape their requests going forward. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you, Daniel. Bye, Mr. Yellen.
I appreciate the comment from Mountain Express. I remind the board one time, we had a lawsuit against the county when you tried to create a gatekeeper. What's a gatekeeper? One person that you go to to get information. General statute says I can go to whoever's got the information. The keeper of the records, Judge Lalo Cavendish agreed with that in the court here in Buncombe County. That's another thing that is a problem. You don't, you cannot create a gatekeeper. I can understand you wanting to know what kind of information's going out, but as a citizen, I have the right to go to the keeper of the information and ask for the information. Actually, the point he brought up, I want to reiterate about, you can charge whatever you want to, is case by case, that permits you to decide you want to shut Don Yellen up, and I think some previous quotes in the newspaper might show that that to be the truth. But Chairman Newman, thank you very much for saying we should have a process and go to the public for it, I do appreciate that. Now, if you really want to know how to have this meeting tonight real fast and get it over with, and done be out of here, and done be home and eating, all these budget amendments, you should put them on the consent agenda. Because you didn't ask for public comment one time and voted on every one of them. All you had to do is put them under the consent agenda, just say, "Has anybody in the public got any questions?" Whoop! And then it'd been done and over with. Because nobody would ask questions, Mike. Who would have? You know? Well, maybe I would have, but you don't listen to me anyway, which is fine, but when you get to the garbage problems, you, you begin to see, I, I might know what I'm talking about there. Because yes, Waste Bro can develop a sticker for their label and put it on that card if it's the same size card. Period. End of discussion. Yes, Waste Bro can have a flat charge by driving by a house and have a bag tag system. I showed them the tags. Turned it, I showed them the tags, and let that little old lady put her little one bag out there and put that tag on it. The city of Asheville ought to be doing the same thing. Now, and that would help your next door neighbor, because she wouldn't have to fool with that big trash can to come over to your house. So, bottom line, there are solutions. And the one thing I think you'll find out, that's why Ms. Green and I talked a lot before she got arrested, she finally figured out I was about solutions, not just raising hell. But now, if it takes raising hell to do it, I'll do it. Period. End of discussion. But thank you again, Brownie, for two things tonight. One is doing what you did and saying that you're going to stay to your system. But just keep in mind, if you're going to do what you did on those budget amendments tonight, just put them under the consent agenda. Let it ride. Get out of here and go home, have supper with the misses.
Uh, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, been brought to my attention that not Buncombe high school students are protesting male students using the women's restroom and vice versa. According to Buncombe County Schools Gender Policy Support Guidelines, it seems that only the transgender students have privacy rights. What are the other students' privacy rights? I'm bringing that to your attention tonight. It's not no school board issue, this is a commission issue. If you get sued, you're going to find out you're on the hot seat as well. Uh, everybody's rights ought to be respected, and, uh, you need to look into it. Uh, the other thing is, it don't seem like you ever clean up anything. You create more, uh, laws and everything else, go on top of something else. Uh, when did you decide on public comment? You've had a big discussion on public comment, and where to put it on, and not to put it on, all this, then you say, "Mr. Chairman, the night that you decided this." Where did you decide that? It happened here in the public, you decided to keep what you got. You said you did, decided, where did you do it? Did I miss somebody, somewhere? Well, TV thirteen, you decided something over here with TV thirteen, I thought. No, you didn't. You left it like it was. Confusing. The other thing, the fire marshal, that was an issue about TV thirteen over here in case of a fire. Well, you said something about the people out here, the police out here, that outside the door, that's creating a fire policy. My God, what did you do? You moved them right out in the main area where the exit is, when you're going out for a fire, uh, they, they're blocking it worse than they was down here. So, uh, you need to clean up some of this stuff. And these are three things that I don't understand why you ain't cleaned up. Now, I want to know where you created this, uh, public comment, where you made this decision at. In the back room? I don't know if anything out here. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
And I'm just going to be really brief. Uh, it's just a concern of mine, um...
And, uh, would you mind, would you mind sharing?
And, sorry, Thomas Preister, now, I work with Children First Communities in school, and I'm at Johnston Elementary. And just one of my concerns with just speaking to the head start, uh, teachers, is the playground at, um, for head start at Johnston, I think it's a community action, uh, satellite site. But I was there when the, uh, new playground at Johnston was, uh, dedicated to the, uh, young lady, Lilo Pickens. I think, uh, Mr. Belger and, uh, Mr. Presley, um, was a part of that. So, um, I didn't know if this was the place to do so, but I figured this was a perfect moment to catch the two of them here. And, uh, I just have, like, some pictures, just to, what it looks like now, and just what they would, um, prefer it to look like. So just wanted to bring that up, because there's nothing at this point for the little ones. They maybe had, like, uh, playground equipment that was maybe ten, twelve years old, so now that has, um, deteriorated, so they're just there with just makeshifts, uh, they have the tricycles. Um, so I just wanted to kind of just bring it to the attention, and maybe y'all can direct me to where I need to start here. This is not the place to do so.
If you have pictures, you can, uh, share them with our clerk here, and he'll, he'll share them with the commission.
Thank you.
All right. And, um... All right, so thank everyone for your public comment. I don't want to make it a habit of, um, getting into dialogue, this is basically our time to listen. of getting into dialogue, this is basically our time to listen to the commission, but just in response to Mr. Rice's question, since I did make a comment at the beginning of the meeting about the procedures, so Jerry, the decision was basically to make no, make no decisions. We've decided, at the last commission meeting, we talked about potentially changing some procedures, but we're not changing any procedures, so there's, there's no decision to adopt any policies that have been made. All right, thank you all for being here, I've got a couple of announcements. On October first, at three PM, the commissioners will hold their pre-meeting at two hundred Hollis Street, room three two six. And on October fifth, at five PM, the commissioners will hold the regular meeting at room three two six, I mean, at, at two hundred Hollis Street, room three two six, in Nashville. I do not believe there is a need for any closed session this evening, so we're adjourned.
We ran out earlier, we're out here to go to this whole week today.
You can't hear your feet.
Okay.
But we don't have any reasonings, what they make.